Good evening colleagues.
I would like to welcome everyone here this evening to this meeting of the Newcastle City Council. We have a very full agenda this evening and so before starting I would like to remind members of a few points as to how we conduct ourselves this evening. Ready for this? All members should address me as the Chair of the meeting and should refrain from interrupting me or other speakers. I appreciate that members may have strong opinions on certain matters and they need to express these courteously at all times. Please remember that all meetings of City Council are recorded and published on the website and YouTube. Thank you. Apologies.
Thank you Lord Mayor. We've received apologies from councillors Beecham, Bird, Dunn, Hindmarsh, Lambert, Strether, Todd and White.
Does the council agree the minutes of the meeting of the meeting of council held on the 2nd of September 2015? Yes? Thank you. Official announcements, the subject of devolution is very much a topic at the moment so before I invite the Deputy Leader of Council to make a short statement on the subject, can I remind members that the Policy Cabinet on Wednesday the 11th of November is on involving all communities in devolution. Also a special scrutiny meeting on the subject is being held tomorrow which all non-executive members have been invited to attend. Details of both meetings have been previously circulated. Can I invite the Deputy Leader of Council to address this meeting?
Thank you very much Lord Mayor. I just want to make a brief statement given that the Leader of Council is unable to be with us tonight, Lord Mayor. The devolution deal as colleagues across the council chamber will know has been signed in principle and so we now have a devolution agreement. That agreement has certain caveats included within it, a major one I think for the city is that we have initially a fair spending review so I think it will be interesting to see the outcomes of the comprehensive spending review later on this month. As part of the ongoing work, we will subsequently have a vote where all members of the council will be able to participate and that will clearly follow full discussion. In each local authority area there will be consultation with members of the public. The event here I understand is on November the 12th so that will be the first event. There's been a lot in the press Lord Mayor about what Durham are doing and Durham are not holding a referendum, they are having a wide consultation with members of the public. It will be different from the way that we would carry that out, it looks as if they're going to have a postal consultation but the outcome of that wouldn't necessarily be binding on the local authority. If we were to consider something along those lines, we estimate the cost of that to be around about £400,000 which is clearly in the present circumstances not affordable. We've got really good methods of consultation across the city so we will be using the tools that we currently have available to us. The Leader of Council has organised a seminar so the first event for members of the council to attend would be on the 17th of November at 6 o'clock. Obviously members will be given details, further information about that. There'll be a detailed presentation on the content of the deal and full opportunity for colleagues to ask questions before the formal debate which is likely to happen early in the new year. I'm sure colleagues know this but the focus of our deal is on employment and skills, clearly the skills deficit that we're all aware of in the North East is a key area of interest and we're really pleased that that's a key focus of our devolution deal. Obviously transport is included in that. In relation to health and social care integration, we've asked for a commission to undertake some very fast piece of work to help us to move forward to full integration across health and social care and that commission we would hope would identify what would be the next piece of work really that needed to help us in the North East to move forward on health and social care integration in a more comprehensive way. I hope that gives enough information Lord Mayor for everyone to understand where we are at currently and obviously there'll be lots of opportunity for questions and presentations subsequently. Thank you very much.
I understand there are two oral questions relating to these matters which we will come to later in the proceedings. Details have been circulated in the chamber tonight about the white ribbon campaign. Tonight male elected members from all political parties are being asked to unite in this project and sign a pledge, which I think is on your seats, to pledge not to condone violence against women and girls and to wear a white ribbon to highlight this pub... Here we go, publicly. We have a related item on tonight's agenda but I would like to take this opportunity to put on record the thanks of the City Council for the work of Stephen Savage and his team in the city's role in hosting very successfully a part of the Rugby World Cup programme. Yeah. Can I give members an early reminder that the lighting of the Bergen Christmas tree will take place at 5.30 on Thursday the 4th of December 2015 and also our next meeting will be on Wednesday the 6th of January 2016. Further details and deadlines will be circulated nearer the time. We have received four petitions for this meeting. First of all I will invite councillor Hudod to present two petitions on behalf of residents of Vancouver Drive and Slingsby Gardens in relation to traffic management problems.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Well actually councillor Stone's going to present the ones from those streets. These are from a couple of other streets, St Julian's Gardens and Sherfield Drive and there are 45 signatures. We the residents of Cochrane Park have had poor road and pavement surfaces for many years. We have been promised that our roads and pavements would be resurfaced like neighbouring streets but nothing has happened. We request that ward funding for local road and pavement maintenance is restored and that St Julian's Gardens and Sherfield are improved within the next financial year. Thank you.
Councillor Stone?
This is, these are the ones from Slingsby and Vancouver in Cochrane Park. We have experienced considerable traffic management problems in our area for some time, rat running and speeding at rush hours is a particular problem. We were promised measures to reduce this but they have not been actioned. We call on the City Council to fund and implement the required work to address this problem and I should note, I've done an email today from an officer saying that the Vancouver plan is going to go ahead now so I'm grateful for that.
Can I call on councillor Bell to respond please?
Thank you Lord Mayor. Can I just check on a procedural matter first please, just that I am referring to when I speak to St Julian Gardens, Sherfield Drive and the second petition is Slingsby Gardens and Vancouver Drive.
That's correct.
That's correct, thank you Lord Mayor. The City Council's been trying to deal with these, I'll deal with Vancouver area first, Vancouver Drive. They've been trying to deal with this for a number of years, actually as was commented in the motion there. The last time that they looked at this, the local members were able to come up with options to alleviate their concerns and the officers could not get a consensus. By the time that the local members subsequently came forward with an idea which is an experimental basis, the funding had run out for that financial year. So we're now in a position to proceed Lord Mayor, so I dare say that the local members and the residents will be happy with that and a consensus has been there and I presume that the members will still want to go forward with the experimental road closure. Sherfield Drive, that's a pavement, and St Julian Gardens. Again Lord Mayor, these were inspected, are on, we'll just get the date right, which is carried out on the 26th of August 2015. The repairs have been carried out which is to bring the pavements to a safe and serviceable condition, that's normal across the city so it's no different to anywhere else but it is anticipated that a delegated decision will be made shortly for the allocation of the highway maintenance funds to individual wards. So then it will be up to the members within the individual wards to prioritise and allocate those funds that are available. I will receive the petitions Lord Mayor, I'll discuss it with the director if need be but the members can always get back in touch with us. Thank you Lord Mayor.
You realise we dealt with all of the petitions at once there. Does the council agree to receive the petitions? Public question time, we haven't received any questions from members of the public for this meeting. Standards Committee Annual Report, I call upon Mr Mark Scrimshaw, the independent head, to introduce the report for information and further discussion.
Thank you Bob. Good evening council. I'm sorry I'm a bit bedraggled, the traffic in the city. You've got the report before you which I think is quite fulsome and I will obviously be happy to take questions on any individual issues but it's just one of two things I'd like to say. Going through it, and I know you've got a big agenda so I'll be quick, paragraph 3.1, the two independent members, I'm obviously one of them, but I'd just like to point out we have a new independent vice-chair, Mick Gary, who I think is here tonight, at least I rang him, I told him I'd be late, this is his first experience of council and he's been a terrific addition as independent vice-chair, so welcome Mick. On paragraph 5.1, the monitoring officer protocol, this has been a very difficult issue because the legislation is so ambiguous, so it's almost been a continual state of reviewing and I'd like to pay particular gratitude to John Softley and Helen Wilson for their work on this, for keeping as far across the legislation as they can and as much in touch with the actual realities of life as possible. They've done a fantastic job and I think we're getting to a point that is acceptable to everybody. Over the page, top of the next page 5.4, the issue of social media guidance which we come on to a bit later as well, I would say this is probably the most important of our new issues, not least because it is extremely contentious, it's very ongoing, there are as many opinions on this as there are people in the room, so I think this one will run and run but I think we are getting to a point, I'll come to that later on, I'll not preempt myself. I'll carry on to paragraph 6.2, the importance of the independent persons which you may or may not remember the new role set up under the most recent legislation, who are not the same as independent members of the committee. These are two separate people who are a sort of eyes and ears and conscience may one say of the monitoring officer and after a few teething problems, because again the law's very ambiguous, I'm told by all sides that this is now working very well, that the system of monitoring officer referring to the independent persons about cases and what should be done is actually working very well. So that's good because it was a difficult issue for us to tackle. If you look at 7.2 you'll see some of those issues highlighted there. On the issue of confidentiality, that again is, I know, very important to members and it's a very difficult issue for us because all we can really do is issue guidance and ask people to act by it and if they choose not to, there's not an awful lot else we can do, we can refer it to the parties etcetera but we do ask for the cooperation of members on this and I have to say that by and large, members behave very honourably on this and try to stick to it as closely as they can, so I thank you for that. Now we come to the social media issue, we've been working on, I don't know how many times this has come up, probably this is the third one, a common approach across North Eastern authorities. Excellent progress has been made by this and the teaser is wait till you see the 2015-16 report, all will be explained but we are actually getting near the point where we're going to be able to issue guidance to all members and we think that will be across all local authorities in the North East. So that would be a huge step forward and I anticipate having lots of complaints from members as soon as we issue it, so we'll wait and see. On 10.3, the induction and training of new members, again something we think is extremely important and I think now we've got to the point where we're using the experience and feedback of new councillors, new members of the council, some of whom are now on the committee, to look at ways in which this can be improved and to monitor and evaluate the training we get. We are very aware that new councillors get reams and reams of induction and training and some things, hopefully not standards, but it's very difficult for everybody to take on board standards and all the other issues but the new councillors are advising us very well on that and we're looking at a sort of top-up training after maybe six months or a year to add to the training they get on induction. On parish councils, paragraph 14, John has been doing, following up Ian Poll's excellent work with parish councils, I think we have a pretty good relationship with our parish councils. We are very lucky that we have parish councils who are not as troublesome as many other authorities' parish councils are, who do their very, very best, sometimes in very difficult circumstances. We don't have rushes of complaints from them but we do need parish council involvement, it's a very important issue and particularly on planning issues, parish council involvement is probably as important as anything but we are mindful of the special resource and time limitations of parish councillors, so we thank those who can turn up and again, John's work with the clerks is extremely useful and we hope that's going well, we seem to be getting good feedback from parish councils on that. Nearly there, very nearly there. The regional, paragraph 18, the regional meeting of chairs and vice-chairs, I think this is a very good thing as they would say. Discussions tend to be quite rich and varied, depending on who shows up but certainly sometimes they can be very rich and varied and it shows where there are areas for cooperation but it also shows where local authorities look at the law in very different ways. We all seem to do things in slightly different ways and some authorities in very different ways and sometimes that's been an eye-opener for people in the room, so we're always looking and feeding back on significant areas of difference and similarity of operations and as a six-monthly meeting I think it's an extremely good precedent to set and hopefully certainly in things like training, there are areas in which we'll be able to cooperate. So that one's ongoing. And finally just a couple more thanks, this is the only time I get to thank people in public, I'm going to do it. councillor Dave Hardman was my vice-chair during this year and I know he's not a member any longer but I would like to put on record my thanks to Dave, he was a marvellous vice-chair, he was very assiduous, very helpful, always free with advice, terrific support and so I'd like to give my thanks to Dave. And I'd also like to thank Linda Scott and her Democratic Services team for all the support they've given us over the year. And finally, I'd like to express my gratitude to both political parties for the seriousness with which they continue to take the issue of standards and our committee and hence I think the continued quality of elected members that they appoint. It's very important that we have people who take it seriously and people with clout on the committee, so thank you to both parties for that, it is appreciated and I think it goes towards the excellent levels of standards of behaviour that vast majority of councillors show, so thank you very much for that. That's really all I've got to say but I'm, as I say, more than happy to take any questions any councillors may have to ask. David?
Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you Lord Mayor, thank you for the report Mark, I think you got your long service award last year wasn't it? It was a notional one wasn't it? But thanks for the way in which you've chaired this in a skilled and even-handed fashion and rigorous fashion for so long. I wanted to ask about paragraph nine where you said that you've considered further amendments to the code of conduct regarding bullying and harassment and I wondered what had prompted you having a look at that, was it incidents here or elsewhere or some new views about what is best practice? I wanted to ask as a second question on paragraph 15, complaints against councillors. I know in some parts of the report when you quote a set of figures you compare it with the previous year, I wondered whether the trend of complaints was going up, it seems as if half of them weren't taken any further and I wondered whether there are any kind of conclusions that might be drawn from that. And then the third and final point was really your point on social media and I do agree the importance of trying to guide us on that but I also agree it'll not be very easy and I've done peer reviews at other authorities that have got, if I say issues that are much more entrenched than ours, I think some members will know what I mean but part of the problem is actually people in the parties or outside political parties, outside the council, commenting on council business and you never really regulate them, so I guess the trick really is within reason to draw within our own code of conduct the way in which we as members might set an example. Thank you.
Very good points, I'll try and take them one by one. The issue on paragraph nine, 9.1, is I think it's more to do with issues of being very clear about definitions of what falls under this category and we've been looking at various organisations like ACAS of how they define it, so it's really making very clear what areas we consider to be to fall under the bullying and harassment legislation, so that's what that's about. I don't think anything in particular has sparked it off other than I've got a bit of an obsession about this and I think it's a very important thing. Fifteen was your point about complaints, now I don't think there's been, I don't think, our complaints are at a really relatively low level, so even if it goes from six to eight, to say that's an increase of 25% can sound extraordinarily dramatic to some of my journalist friends but actually it isn't. And we haven't had a hearing for quite a while, I think most of these things, this is where John and the independent persons, I should say independent people I guess but it's not independent persons, have dealt with these things. There've been a slightly different change this year but, that's this year, last year these were all dealt with by John satisfactorily I think but I don't think there's any pattern, we've not foreseen any pattern of a very low level of complaint rising. If it fell any more there'd hardly be any. And yes, I couldn't agree more about social media, actually one of the regional meetings, the chair of one of the other authorities said, well if it was up to me I'd confiscate everybody's iPhones on the way into the chamber. I thought, oh good luck with that. So there are some very, very extreme views on this and we're just trying to tread a line between, well what the guidance will be about is about reminding people that standards of behaviour as applied to social media are the same as applied to everything else, so I think it's a reminder about that more than anything.
Could I ask councillor if you agree to accept the report? Thank you Mark.
Thank you very much, thank you again councillor.
We now have the Audit Committee Annual Report, I call upon Mr Hamish Muir to introduce.
Thank you Lord Mayor, thank you, good evening members. The Audit Committee is an independently chaired committee which seeks to ensure that the controls for running the council are adequate and that these controls are managed appropriately and that the risks that the council faces are also managed appropriately. So the topics that we look at include finance, procurement, systems relating to the employment of people, IT risks, capital programmes and so on. And in order to do our work we fundamentally rely upon two sources of assurance, that of the work of the external auditor Deloitte and the internal audit function. I'd just bring to your attention in this year three predominantly successful activities. The first of those is that you'll be reassured to know that we have a clean audit report.
clear about definitions of what falls under this category and we've been looking at various organisations like ACAS and of how they define it. So it's really making very clear what areas we consider to be, to fall under the bullying and harassment legislation. So that's what, that's what. I don't think anything in particular has sparked it off, other than I've got a bit of an obsession about this and I think it's a very important thing. Fifteen was your point about complaints. Now, I don't think there's been, I don't think, our complaints are at a really relatively low level, so even if it goes from six to eight, to say that's an increase of 25% can sound extraordinarily dramatic to some of my journalist friends, but actually it isn't. And we haven't had a hearing for quite a while. I think most of these things, this is where John and the independent persons, should say independent people, I guess, but it's not independent persons, have dealt with these things. There've been a slightly different change this year, but that's this year. Last year, these were all dealt with by John satisfactorily, I think, but I don't think there's any pattern, we've not seen any pattern of a very low level of complaint rising. If it fell any more, there'd hardly be any. And yes, I couldn't agree more about social media. Actually, one of the regional meetings, the chair, the chair of one of the other authorities said, "Well, if it was up to me, I'd confiscate everybody's iPhones on the way into the chamber." I thought, "Oh, good luck with that." So there are some very, very extreme views on this and we're just trying to tread a line between, well, what the guidance will be about is about reminding people that standards of behaviour as applied to social media are the same as applied to everybody, to everything else. So I think it's a reminder about that more than anything.
Could I ask councillor if you agree to accept the report? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much, thank you again, councillor.
We now have the Audit Committee annual report. I call upon Mr Hamish Muhr to introduce.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you. Good evening, members. The Audit Committee is an independently chaired committee which seeks to ensure that the controls for running the council are adequate and that these controls are managed appropriately and that the risks that the council faces are also managed appropriately. So the topics that we look at include finance, procurement, systems relating to the employment of people, IT risks, capital programmes and so on. And in order to do our work, we fundamentally rely upon two sources of assurance, that of the work of the external auditor Deloitte and the internal audit function. I'd just bring to your attention, in this year, three predominantly successful activities. The first of those is that you'll be reassured to know that we have a clean audit report and I think that credit to the finance function in working successfully to achieve that with a very smooth audit should be given. A second success I'd like to bring to your attention is that we are beginning to have much closer working relationships with the scrutiny function so that we can delineate between, if you like, the areas of control that we seek to look at, but also that scrutiny is able to look at the performance function more effectively. And I think the third area of success is that we have had some real focus this year again on financial management and the organisation's performance from a control point of view and I believe that that has actually been a great success. So the biggest challenges going forward for fifteen and sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, obviously the biggest issue is the capability of the council to respond to the reductions in income. So that's an area that the committee will be looking at from a system point of view to make sure that the financial planning and the financial controls are in place to enable us to function within the reduced financial income. I think the next challenge is to build on our work with scrutiny further and the third and last challenge will be that we have new auditors. Deloitte have done their term, it's not because in any way they have failed or they have not been satisfactory, but under the regime, they are only appointed for a limited period of time and so in this coming audit period, we will have new auditors. Finally, I'd just like to say thank you to the finance function, which has performed admirably. The support to the committee has been exceptional. Deloitte, I believe, have done an exceptional job. You might think I would say that because on page fourteen, in point eight, they bring to the attention that they felt that the audit committee was amongst the best that they'd seen and this was from the most senior person in Deloitte and I hope that gives you some reassurance that the committee is functioning well. And lastly, just to thank the internal audit function because they are caught between, on the one hand, trying to ensure that the processes and controls are in place, but having to work on a day-to-day basis with officers. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Councillor Faulkner again?
Councillor Loe. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your report, Hamish. A couple of things I wanted to ask you about. I agree with you, there are differences between scrutiny and audit, however, I do think that the closer working relationship is starting to pay off, including the joint workshops we've done, so we each understand the others' roles. A couple of things I wanted to ask your opinion on. Scrutiny's questioned robustness of council performance over the last year, including the reporting of that using the dashboard which goes to Cabinet. I just wondered if you were satisfied that the current dashboard performance reporting system is adequate in providing public assurance that the council is measuring things sufficiently that can affect and measuring performance in relation to policies and presenting performance information consistently and objectively, which allows members to publicly scrutinise the decisions and hold the council to account and to compare the organisation's performance over time. And just to follow on from that, the other one is about financial risk, which you address in your report, and corporate governance of audits, future work. I was just going to say that scrutiny haven't seen any assumptions behind the major capital projects which the executive has signed up to accept. Considerable risk on behalf of the council. For example, we haven't seen financial information for the city deal or the schedule of income for the civic centre refurbishment and I just wondered if you thought this was a limitation of corporate governance that needed to be looked at? Thank you.
Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations on being best in class from Deloitte. It's good news. One or two points, if I may. Number two, on the report, it says significance rating. I couldn't quite understand that. When it says risk level low, is it the risk that audit won't do its job properly? I'm not quite sure what it's judging when it says it's a low risk level, so that was just the point about the report. On specifics, on paragraph twelve, there's a reference to risk monitoring reports and I kind of, I wondered, because these come to scrutiny as well, like the performance reports that councillor Loe referred to, I wondered if you ever had any input into what are selected as the key risks, as opposed to judging whether they're assessed correctly? Do you actually have any input? Because we, certainly in scrutiny, we had a couple which we thought maybe should have been there but weren't there. On paragraph fourteen, you make a reference to organisational creep and I wondered who that was, sorry, no, I wondered what that was. Sorry, bad joke. I take it you mean when the council spends a lot of money releasing people, unfortunate requirement through redundancy, that they don't backfill with agency staff or bring people back on again? Because I think there was at some point, there was some concern about that, so if you can say anything about that, that would be helpful. There's just two more points. One is in the appendix, appendix one, under governance arrangements, which sets out the terms of reference, 3C, it says to refer any issue referred to it by the chief executive or any chief officer. Does that ever happen? Does the committee always set its own work programme? Or have there actually been things that are referred from the chief officers of the council? And then finally, something I mentioned to you on the way in, I think it's a requirement for scrutiny to do the job of looking at treasury management and I've never really understood why that's the case. I would have thought it more obvious that audit should look at treasury management review because it's about whether the council's operating within its financial controls and limits and to me, that seems to be more of an audit function. And I wondered what you thought about that and if you thought, if you agreed and the committee agreed, maybe we might do a joint representation to see if we could move that from one committee to another. Thank you.
Could I ask Hamish to respond, please?
Well, between you, you've managed seven points, so I'll have a go. The first issue was about performance data and whether the performance dashboard was adequate. We've come a long way in terms of providing information about performance and I think that that is a credit to the organisation, that we now have a dashboard. There are issues about consistency. If you have a degree of cynicism and you ever watched Yes Minister, you will know that Sir Humphrey Appleby always said, "If you want to present a slightly different picture, change the basis on which the data is compared." So we have to watch for that. But I think we're moving in the right direction, but I think one of the areas that scrutiny can contribute to is to look at that dashboard process and look at the granularity of that data so that we do get consistency, but it is an area we do need to keep an eye on. There is a balance to be struck between providing enough data that folk can make sense of it and drown in the data where you can't actually see the wood for the trees. It is an area that we continue to look at. In terms of capital projects, this is an area that we have had some interest in, in terms of making sure that the process for decision-making is adequate, but we have to be very careful. It's not the role of the audit committee to challenge the decisions that council makes, but it is the role of the audit committee to make sure that the robustness of the decision-making process, not the decision but the process, is adequate. And I think that there has been a big improvement over the years, but it is an area, particularly in the larger projects, that we continue to keep an eye on. In terms of the significance level that was raised, I think it's slightly confusing. I think what it means is that the significance of the report we would hope that you would take seriously, i.e. high, the risk levels of this report, we hope that you would believe would be low because the thing has been done properly. In relation to your question about creeps, the audit committee uses that phrase because it's quite possible in organisations to think that you've managed to nail down the size of the organisation and then to find you restructure, you redesign it, you reclassify something and suddenly the numbers change. So it is an area that we keep a close eye on. You asked the question of whether chief officers rush forward with suggestions for the audit committee that they would like us to look at and grill them in depth. You can imagine generally what the answer to that question would tend to be. However, what I would say is that when we have pressed for particular subjects, the response that we get in, across the authority now, is significantly better than it was, but generally it is generated by the committee itself. Of course, there are chief officers here and I would always welcome them coming forward with areas that they think need scrutiny, but turkeys and Christmas come to mind. In terms of the scrutiny of the treasury management function, I think that is something that we should look at. I think there may be an opportunity and that would be a good step forward in terms of further joint working.
Does councillor agree to accept the report? Thank you, Hamish. We now come to the overview and scrutiny committee Newcastle annual report. I'll call upon councillor Loe to move the report, seconded by councillor Franks.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to introduce the scrutiny report. I hope that everyone acknowledges the fact that this year it comes in a very different format and thanks to go to Karen Kristen for that, who has spent a lot of time relating back the activities of scrutiny to the activities of the priorities of the council and I think it works. I think some people will be surprised by how much work we've actually got through in the last year through scrutiny. It's very diverse, the work's very diverse. We've got task and finish groups, all sorts of things going on, but I think what's been good is the number of people who've partook from outside the authority and outside of the council about how we actually have got people in and they've given us their opinions quite freely and helped us to formulate our task and finish reports. I would like to make a plea though, however, to backbenchers, there are a lot of things that go on in scrutiny that people may be interested in. Everyone is entitled to come along and partake, task and finish groups in particular. We have an open meeting tomorrow just to prove the point, but I do think that there is a lot there that we have covered, there is a lot of people who've partaken. I hope everyone finds it interesting and if anybody has any comments, please let me have them and we hope to be even more busy in the next 12 months. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Franks to second?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. The report speaks for itself. We have done a lot of good and serious work and worked together as colleagues from both sides of the chamber and really, there's a lot of hard work gone into it by a lot of people. Attendance at those meetings are excellent. I'd like to thank all members and of course, all officers who've worked so hard to make it. A really good, a really good effective scrutiny committee, thank you.
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to just thank all the members of the Health scrutiny committee and who work very hard on a number of issues. We do actually have a very important role on this council and that we do have the role of keeping to account all those who provide health services for Newcastle residents and that includes both of the hospital trusts, the CCGs, the ambulance service, as well as monitoring the work done by adult and social care, children's social care and looking at a lot of the issues that are coming forward, particularly the redesign of mental health services, changes to public health, health and wellbeing of children, issues such as obesity that we've been tackling and obviously, something that's going to be ongoing for a long time is the important area of integration of health and social care. So we have covered an awful lot, it's a very difficult time for the health and social care agenda, so I'm sure it will continue to be extremely busy, but I'd also like to thank Karen Kristen for all her work helping us and for other officers who've been involved in the work of health scrutiny.
Councillor Mendelson?
Yes, I'm speaking as vice-chair of Health scrutiny. I'd just like to endorse all the comments that have happened so far. Health scrutiny is a huge range of work. We have Karen Kristen as a policy officer who does an awful lot of work for us. I'd also like to commend all members of the committee who put a lot of time in. We also have what we call lead members who work with some of the health providers and have done extra sessions with them and come back with some really valid points. Also, I think the partners that we work with have been very important. We would like to encourage partners, members of the public to come and see what we do in health scrutiny and let us know about issues that are going on. For example, last year we worked with the Eating Disorders Campaign Group. We've had quite a lot of information from patient groups at practices where there are health issues and number issues. And actually, I'd also like to commend a colleague on our group, well, a few colleagues, but particularly, there was a large bit of work on autism, which Denise, councillor Denise had, Denise? Denise Jones? Councillor Denise Jones had a leading role in and is also chaired by a member of overview and scrutiny and that work, the work that we do, not only opens up issues and gives people an opportunity to explore them, but can also look at ways in which that can be progressed in the future. So I'd just like to commend everybody's work and I'm sure our workload will be even bigger than this year, next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just really general comments. The first is to look at one main function of scrutiny, which is to hold Cabinet to account as a critical friend and I think that scrutiny does a good job in that regard. A good example, I think, would be the way in which the budget process went through last year and the improved quality of information to benefit all members. But the other two functions of scrutiny, I sometimes have questions about. The second thing we're supposed to do is to review performance and there's already been some observations about the performance reports and I do think, and we did say at a recent scrutiny meeting, that we hope at some point, not too far away, that the present regime of performance reports might just be reviewed. There've been a lot of ad hoc comments over a couple of years now and I think it would be a good opportunity to have a more formal review of what is in there and what we look at. And then the final comment really is on the third function of scrutiny, which is one that we don't do very well at all and that is policy development. And the best local authorities, in my view, have a really strong role for scrutiny and policy development. In fact, there are a lot of local authorities, not this one, maybe it's our own fault, on the scrutiny side too, but there are a lot of local authorities that do pre-decision scrutiny rather than have the whole thing after the event. So I just kind of make those observations because it's certainly something that I hope we might be able to explore in the coming year. Thank you.
Does councillor Loe wish to reply? Does council agree to accept the report? Thank you. I would call upon Assistant Director of Legal Services who wishes to say a few words before the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As members will be aware, the next four items on the agenda make reference to ongoing police operations relating to allegations of sexual exploitation. I'd remind members that there are reporting restrictions in place and therefore, members are advised not to refer to the detail of such operations or their potential outcomes during the debate. Thank you.
Now call upon the children and young people's portfolio report councillor Kingsland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm assuming people have read the report and the addendum which was produced after I attended scrutiny panel, so I don't intend to go into any detail in relation to those, but I just wanted to say a few introductory words. The first one, to welcome Colin Morris to the meeting, our new independent chair of the safeguarding children board, who's here to present his report tonight and I hope you find it a very interesting report. Also, to welcome the youth councillors who are with us this evening and to congratulate them on the excellent piece of consultation they've done with young people across the city to find out what their priorities are. We look forward to continuing to work with them. Another bit of congratulations, I'd just like to draw your attention to the easel and the award at the front of the room. This is the prize that our team working with travel for, independent travel for young people with special educational needs won. An excellent piece of work called My Trav App. If anybody is interested, please contact Julie Scotland about it. If anybody is interested, please contact Julie Scotland about it. Her team have done a fantastic job. It's really innovative, and I, you know, welcome you having a look at the award whilst it's here tonight because I wanted to be able to show it off for them. Just one more thing, I've been asked at scrutiny and Cabinet about attainment in relation to education. The figures are still not verified and won't be verified until they're published on Rais Online. But not to be complacent, we're already asking officers to look at the data behind some of the figures because it does appear that there have been some dips in performance. There are multiple reasons for this, just three examples. One is that the figures don't actually reflect in terms of GCSEs what young people actually come out of school with, because they don't take account if they've got higher grades in re-sits. Newcastle College figures are included in that, including their alternative education, which I believe is the first time that has been in there. And also, really worryingly, it's something I was talking to the principal of Excelsior about today, we've got increasing numbers of children coming to this country who've never had any primary education at all. And in year 11 at Excelsior at the moment, there are 45 children out of 190 who didn't have any primary education. So there's an, the population is changing so much, but as I say, we're not going to be complacent, we're looking into the figures. And once they're verified, the plan is that we will be having some briefing sessions for members so that they will have an opportunity to see what the actual figures are and what some of the understanding is behind that. So I'll just take questions now, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Mendelson.
Thanks for the report. It is not really a question in a way, it's a comment, but I just wanted to, page 63, you talk about Skillmill and Meats, people not in education, employment or training. The point is that we have worked with Skillmill in South Jessam, but we also at our recent skills scrutiny took evidence from Skillmill. And the point I wanted to make is that this has been so effective because they offer meaningful employment with well-supported and good quality training, which unfortunately isn't always the case in such schemes. So I just wanted to endorse that. And the question really is about the mental health and wellbeing of young people. We know that it's a huge issue, and as mentioned in the scrutiny report, we did, we did an evidence gathering day about that. What are your, I mean, what we would want to scrutinise, I think, in some detail, but what would we be able to put in place across the city to guarantee that, you know, to support the mental health and wellbeing of young people in our schools, which I understand is an issue from primary school age upwards. Thank you.
Councillor Higgins.
Can I first of all, Lord Mayor, just thank the councillor Kingsland for this report that reflects the excellent work that goes on in children's services, and also mention how much I'm enjoying being part of the Corporate Parenting Committee, which is tremendous the feedback we get from young people on their experiences. We had a wonderful feedback from a young woman recently, who is a pupil at the Excelsior Academy in relation to looked after children. So just to make that point, but the question I've got relates to page 64 and the work of our social workers, who we value so much, and the comments there about the proposal known as Family Insights, which I was very interested to learn about, which will enable social workers to do far more direct and purposeful work with children and families, and has taken steps to reduce bureaucracy, which I'm sure will be welcomed by our social workers. Bearing in mind that I know from experience that Ofsted placed tremendous importance on record-keeping, and they inspect records meticulously, it's just really some reassurance that we can do this safely without our social workers coming in for any criticism. And if we are managing to reduce bureaucracy so that social workers can work more directly with families through the Family Insights initiative, can we extend it to other areas of social work as well?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cot.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much, councillor Kingsland, for your very detailed report. I think it shows a lot about how the council in challenging circumstances can do a lot to support children and young people, and there's been a lot of innovative work going on, which is reflected in the report. You mention early on in your report issues about funding, and I know that is forever a challenge, because budgets are being tightened further. I'd be interested to understand from councillor Kingsland what opportunities there might be for the future for applying for funding, as well as threats maybe in conjunction with central government priorities. And in all the talk around northern powerhouse devolution of responsibilities, is there a children's services agenda that you're aware of as part of that, in which case, what sort of issues might come onto the horizon? One other thing I'll mention is about the Education and Adoptions Bill, which is going through Parliament at the moment. I'm sure councillor Kingsland and I will share concern about the change to academy regimes, which will enable them to, well, there'll be some barriers removed. And I know Liberal Democrat peers in the House of Lords are actually looking at some of the issues, looking at how we can, for instance, ensure that fully qualified teachers appear in academies, that academy change should be inspected, and that there should be parental consultation around any future developments of academies. And I know there's a lot of pressure to create academies, so there might be a context there that you can respond to. It says a lot, actually, when the House of Lords is more progressive as an institution than the House of Commons is, but that's the situation we live in at the moment. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just wanted to draw John's attention to a comment she's made, that's made on page 65 there, where she refers to the 2% dip in performance, a very small dip. I really wouldn't be too worried about that, there's bound to be some movement from year to year, up and down. But the issue it brings up is the misuse of averages nationally in the education world. The reality is that at any one time, half the authorities and schools will be below average, as will half of them be above it. And as a school governor, I'm getting increasingly worried about an approach which seems to be taking my Ofsted, who expects all the schools to be above average. So I wonder if you could draw attention to, more widely, to that misconception.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a question in similar vein, actually, and I'm grateful to the Cabinet Member for the update on the issue of education attainment, which partly answered my question. The issue of attainment has not got noticed on this side of the Council either, and we were struck by the fact that on GCC Results Day, Newcastle Council, unlike our neighbours, didn't publish a release celebrating our results. A slight dip in performance, just saying that it was, we noticed on this side of the chamber that we were surprised that, unlike our neighbours, Newcastle Council didn't publish, did not publish a release on the results day celebrating our exam results in the city. A slight dip would be one way of putting it, another would be to say that while some schools posted some very good results and should be, you know, should be applauded for those, others saw some rather surprising falls. Okay, I shall, I've been told to address the Lord Mayor, so I'm addressing it to the Lord Mayor rather than to you, but I will turn and allow councillor Kingsland to hear what I'm saying a bit better. What I was relaying was that a slight dip in performance was one way of putting it, another would be to say that whilst some schools posted some very good, improved results, others saw some surprising falls. We are aware of some contextual issues behind this, but we would welcome the opportunity to receive further briefing on what the LEA is doing in response. And I'd particularly be interested to know if there's been any correspondence with Ofsted on this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any more questions? Councillor Ashby, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's really a follow-on to the previous two questions from councillor Cook and councillor Stone, which is about this data, we're showing dips on the, these attainment figures, which councillor Kingsland earlier on had said was in part due to effectively changes in the base, in the kinds of children that are in, in the sample. And these figures are very important to schools. The schools in Parkinson's, for instance, have been using the attainment levels as part of their advertising for future pupils. And clearly, they can't do that this year because their results are not improving. If there are changes in the base, it will be a lot of work for officers, I'm sure, but would it, might it not be possible to take the standard figures that are coming out of the process and give us an adjustment for the changes in the base year on year, which would then give us a new base for the year that comes after that? So we can see the effect of this, these non-standard or these big demographic changes, if you will.
Thank you, councillor. Before I ask councillor Kingsland to reply, just to advise members that a member of the youth parliament had his hand in the air, just to advise you that we didn't ignore him, we've been across to advise him of the procedures. Councillor Kingsland.
Yes, and Felicity, I'm sure the staff who've been working on the Skillmill project will be very grateful for your comments, it is an exceptional piece of work. I agree, mental health in young people is a very significant issue. I was staggered recently by a statistic that says that 75% of adults with mental health problems began to have mental health problems as children, which I think is really quite staggering, and it is why we need to be looking after young people's mental health. It is a significant issue for the youth council, it's one of the things they've identified as a priority, and it is identified as a priority for a joint piece of work between council and health to review mental health services, not just the higher-tier services like CAMHS, but also the lower level of intervention. And I have asked if the youth council can be put in touch with that review, because clearly they have some personal views from their own knowledge of experiences of young people in schools, which I think will be very valuable. In terms of Family Insights, Rob, the work around reducing bureaucracy is around actually having more face-to-face work, so hopefully that will actually not impact on safety at all, but in fact improve safety, because social workers will have more time to be with families and to get to know them better. And part of that was a capital spend to provide them with remote devices, so they don't keep having to come back to office space to record all of the contacts that they've had, and obviously, new ways of working and targeting specific areas such as relationships between teenagers and their families, neglect and other specific areas. And yes, I agree, if it works, it's something we really need to be rolling out to other areas of social work. As to funding, I think, Nick, the council has looked at every opportunity there is to find additional funding. Family Insights is one example of that, the PIP and the PUP programmes also. And sorry for using the initials, but they're explained in more detail in the report. And so we will always be looking at that opportunity. But unfortunately, in terms of the northern devolution, the government has redlined anything to do with children, so we can't include that in that. I absolutely agree with concerns about the quality in relation to the push towards academies. Obviously, it's been a priority of the coalition government as was, and now the current government's stepping up the pace. Any new school has to be a free school or academy. But we have given some clear guidance in terms of, and this was a question that was asked last time, and we have had some consideration of this since, that, you know, we will only give our conditional support to a new application if it can demonstrate a number of things. One is our preferences, that it is an existing excellent provider within the city rather than somebody coming in from outside. We'd want assurances about what the financial commitments were, that they would meet teachers' paying conditions, and that they would meet our inclusion and behaviour and admissions policies. So we would only, we can't stop the applications, but we would place conditions on anything that we chose to support. As to the key stage two, the comment, Dave, around misuse of averages, and one of the things I would say is that, you know, what I get is the most important thing isn't actually that target, it's the progress that children make, because a lot of our children start school at a very low base, but actually, when they come into school, they may still be below national average at the end, but the progress they make from beginning to end, given where they start in life, is really quite impressive in many of our schools. I think you say surprise, Greg said something about surprising falls in some schools in GCSE. I think I'm aware of situations, and some of that is around the way exams have been marked, and also the way re-sits have and have not been taken into consideration. Some of those remarks are still underway, so until we get the outcome of that, it's really difficult to make comment, but I can assure you that there will be briefings, as I promised before, once we get underneath those figures and know precisely what the attainment is. And in answer to your question, we are always in touch with Ofsted. Ofsted come into our schools on a regular basis. We communicate with them, we've got a local regional rep who meets with our officers on a regular basis and is constantly monitoring the progress that we're making. And finally, well, it would be great if we could adjust figures, or the government would let us adjust figures based on the cohort year by year, but unfortunately, the targets are set by government, and they are what they are. So we know that there are differences in the cohort year by year, but they are not taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Does the Council agree to accept the report? Thank you. Now call upon Mr Colin Morris to put forward the Safeguarding Children's Board Annual Report 2014/2015. Mr Morris.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, for allowing me to have the opportunity to present the 2014/15 Annual Report on behalf of the Safeguarding Board. As you'll know, this is my first appearance before you, and to allow me the opportunity to present this important document, both to yourself, Lord Mayor, and to your council. The annual report is a statutory requirement. It must be presented to the local authority's leader of the council, to the local authority chief executive, to the Police and Crime Commissioner, and to the Chair of the Wellbeing for Life Board. However, the fact that you are allowing me to present this to your full council, Lord Mayor, speaks volumes and sends out a fabulous message about how the council views its commitment to children and young people living in this city. As you are aware, the Children's Board works very collaboratively and closely with the Safeguarding Adults Board, enabling us to view and address safeguarding issues very much in a joined-up way, in a whole-family way right across the life course. This has been particularly important in the context of the complex work we are all doing around the challenging issues of sexual exploitation, a topic that acknowledges or respects no borders, be they geographical, gender or race, but continues to threaten those who are the most vulnerable and at most risk in the city, be they children, young people, or vulnerable adults. This joined-up work across both boards will do all possible to improve the life chances and indeed the life circumstances of such a vulnerable group of individuals. Similarly, the annual report also gives a real focus on the important issues surrounding domestic abuse and violence, yet another key issue that I know you, as a council, have shown real interest and tenacity about in the past. Now, along with these two major priorities, the annual report also provides important detail and information about the early help and early intervention work, all of which you can find referenced on page 12 of the annual report. Success here is about getting intervention at exactly the right level, at the right time, and most certainly before things start to spiral into more formal levels of intervention. And on page 38, you will find important information that is linked to the work of the multi-agency safeguarding hub, known as the MASH, and the vital crucial work, the role that this makes in terms of the early help offering. It's really important that the Safeguarding Children's Board understands and asks difficult and challenging questions about the performance of our safeguarding partnership. To this end, pages 22 through to 31 of the annual report set out specific performance information around key performance areas, such as the numbers of children looked after, those children who are missing from care or those children who are missing from care or from home, details around the children who are in private fostering arrangements, specific information about child protection in performance, ethnicity, gender, and a whole host of other performance areas, which board members can cross-challenge colleagues across the partnership in order to gain assurance that the safeguarding system is both safe and is functioning as effectively as it can. It's important to note that Newcastle is now in a shrinking cohort of local authority areas in the North East that is yet to be Ofsted inspected from its children's safeguarding perspective. An important challenge for us is to learn from those who have already been through the inspection process, be they rated good, requiring improvement, or indeed inadequate. We must make sure that we do all we can to have in place the safest possible safeguarding arrangements for those most vulnerable children and young people who live in the city. So quickly to conclude, Mr Mayor, Lord Mayor, I thought it might be helpful to leave you with three positive messages. The first is that Newcastle, especially in the context of sexual exploitation, there is real tangible evidence of great partnership working between all of the agencies, but especially between the local authority, health bodies, and the police. The second is that numbers of children looked after are starting to reduce. Now, this is obviously good news in the financial context, but much more importantly, this is great news for the city's children and young people. And thirdly, despite this being a real challenge, and this is a challenge that's a national challenge, there are robust initiatives taking place, deployed to ensure that we listen to and give a voice to children who are looked after and who are or are involved in child protection processes. And on that basis, I would commend you to the work of Voices for Choices and viewpoints that are referenced in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Morris. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Welcome to the chamber, Mr Morris. Thank you very much for the report. Can I just ask you a couple of questions, really, from a perspective, in addition to being a member, of being a school governor? We've recently, and I imagine this is true of all schools, had a fresh round of presentations about our responsibility as governors for safeguarding. And I went back to, when I knew we were going to have this discussion tonight, I went back to the presentation we were given, and it did make reference to what was said to be a lack of understanding amongst other agencies about schools' role and resources in safeguarding. I just kind of wondered what your observations were about that, because that's kind of slightly worrying, seeing as the whole debate is around joined-up approach to things. And the second is something that I think in your report you were almost touching on anyway, because you refer on page 15 to the challenge of engaging the schools when there's such increased diversity of schools. So I wondered if you were satisfied about the way in which the local authority monitors the governor's safeguarding reports, and whether there are any conclusions that are emerging from that monitoring process? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Higgins?
Yes, can I also welcome you here this evening, and thank you for presenting this very comprehensive report. I just want to make a comment about, or a question in relation to the current economic climate that you referred to in, that was referred to in page 157. I'm very reassured about the positive comments you made about the way that our frontline staff do carry out their safeguarding duties, and I think they're to be commended for that. But we do know that we face increasing financial pressures over the next few years, and I wonder whether the board has any concerns about the way this might impact on the workloads of frontline staff, and whether you have raised these concerns elsewhere.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cott?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and welcome to your new role. A few points I wanted to raise. First of all, pleased about, obviously, the reduction in the numbers of looked-after children. Be interested to know whether you think that trend will be sustained, particularly as numbers of looked-after children are vulnerable to particular trends, things that can come out of the blue that can change things, that's one thing. Another issue was about partnership arrangements, you alluded to the strength of those. How robust do you think those are, given that the financial climate may mean that partners have to contract budgets, and how embedded are those partnerships? A third point relates to missing children. You've mentioned that, and there's a big increase in the last year, which you account for, which is accounted for in the report, a number of reasons, being part of a pilot, and there's a large number of looked-after children there. The figures seem quite concerning, and I know there was a lot of work done around this a few years ago, and it would seem from the trend that things may be going in the opposite direction, so I'd be interested in your comments on that. And the fourth thing, the final thing, is just about inspections coming up. You may find this a difficult question to answer, but if inspectors came tomorrow, what would you think they would say our strengths were in Newcastle, and what areas might need to be improved?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stone?
It's a similar question, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thanks, Mr Morris, for your report and for your work, which is clearly very important, particularly given the current local context. I understand you perform the same role as independent chair on other North East authorities, and I'm aware you've been through the Ofsted inspection process on another authority. Can you give us reassurances that the outcome is likely to be different here in Newcastle than it is somewhere else?
Thank you, councillor. Do you have any more? Thank you. Could I ask you to respond, Mr Morris?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Wide-ranging questions, I've got sort of seven or eight there. Let's talk about the schools, first of all. Schools play an enormously important part in the safeguarding process. If we think about the length of time that children and young people spend in the schools, they probably spend more time there than they do anywhere else. And so it's really, really important that the board is engaged with schools. We have a number of mechanisms to do in that, we have board-level representatives from schools, as I'm sure you're aware. There is also a safeguarding forum in place, recently established, and is working at that interface to ensure that as much information, knowledge can be shared, both backwards and forwards, and that the right environment exists for us to be notified, for us to get engaged about specific safeguarding issues. So a lot of work going on there, and still lots to be done. It would be a brave man to say that we're on top of our game there, but it's certainly, you know, very high on our collective agenda, and more particularly, high on my agenda, because I think there is more work to be done there. So that's around the governance, if you like. We are doing our best to engage, I've mentioned that. In terms of children who go missing, it's a huge, huge area of anxiety for safeguarding boards everywhere. Numbers are unfortunately going up in almost every place that is reporting on this. It's perhaps part of a modern-day phenomena, where children and young people take to their feet fairly regularly, they go missing, they engage in things that we don't like them to be engaged in. What we have is now far more robust arrangements for, at least when we track down, when the children and young people are returned, particularly the children and young people who are in care, that we have opportunities to debrief those individuals, to try and understand where they've been to, to try and understand the activity they've been engaged in, and to try and reinforce the message about how dangerous that sort of activity is. But it's a really important issue, and it's one that will continue to challenge us. Monitoring, right. In terms of the numbers of children looked after, clearly, it's reassuring that numbers are coming down, and in some sense, that represents the resources that are being inputted at the front end in order to try and prevent children and young people coming into the system right from the start, and for working with those children and young people and their families when they come into the system, to try and get them through the system as quickly as possible. It would be a brave person that would stand in front of you and say, yes, they're coming down, and they will continue to come down, because what we know is, these figures are, they are very, very flexible. They can come down in one year, and for really no extricable reason, they can go up again the year after. So it's a really dangerous issue for people to give a commitment that they're going to stay in that position. What we know, though, is it's really important, if children and young people come into the care system, that we work with them and get them through the system and out of the system as quickly as is safe to do so, because the care system isn't a good place for children and young people to be in, or at least not all children to be in. In terms of the partnership arrangements, I think there are very good partnership arrangements in place in Newcastle. I'm very impressed with the work that's been done previously by board members, and by, actually, by everybody who plays their part in the safeguarding partnership right across the city. Money is being, the consequences of financial reductions is being felt by every agency who are represented around the table, let's not pretend it's not. And at the same time, more and more is being asked of people in terms of what they are required to do. But what I can give you an assurance is, is that there isn't any agency or any individual who sits around the board table or the important subcommittees that support the board, that's starting to say, well, we're struggling now, we can no longer play our part in that. We are united and determined, and safeguarding remains an absolute priority citywide. And then finally, Lord Mayor, the issue about Ofsted, well, clearly Ofsted is a major issue. I think one of the things that we need to be careful about, about the Ofsted threat, if you like, is that we need to actually make sure, irrespective of what Ofsted are saying, we need to be sure that our services for children and young people from a safeguarding perspective are the best that they could possibly be. And if they are the best that they can possibly be, then applying the Ofsted inspection criteria to us shouldn't make us, shouldn't give us any cause for anxiety. Again, brave man who predicts an outcome from an Ofsted inspection, I think we're in as robust a state as we can be, but the Ofsted inspections, you know, come from all sorts of different angles, and, you know, can find things that are problematic, no doubt about it.
Thank you, Mr Morris. Does council agree to accept the report?
Agree.
Thank you, Mr Morris. Could I call upon councillor Kilgare to table the Adult Care and Health Portfolio Report?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before I introduce the report, I'd just like to place on record my appreciation of our dedicated staff teams, and thank officers for their help in pulling the report together. Health scrutiny committees made some valuable comments about the report, and a list of their questions and the responses have been appended to tonight's papers. This is my first report as portfolio holder, and I'm very proud of what's been achieved, despite savage government imposed cuts which have affected the adult social care budget. There have been many successes in the last year, not least the delivery of new housing models that deliver better value for money, and more importantly, deliver better outcomes for our residents. Excellent progress is being made on transforming care for people with a learning disability, moving away from institutional models of care to a community-based model. And the appendices to the report give some great examples of how the services we provide or commission are making a real difference to people's lives. Keeping vulnerable adults safe from harm remains a priority, and I refer you to the Newcastle Adult Safeguarding Board Annual Report on the agenda later for more detailed information about this work. There have also been a number of challenges, however, and I've tried in this report to be honest about the challenges we've faced in the last 12 months, and also about the challenges and risks ahead. I cannot emphasise enough the impending crisis we face in the underfunding of adult social care. Budget cuts coupled with unfunded new burdens as a result of legislation like the CARE Act means we've had to work even harder to shield our most vulnerable residents from the government's austerity programme. An aging population means that demands on services continue to grow as resources shrink. We aren't alone in this situation. The LGA estimates there will be a £2.9 billion annual funding gap in social care by the end of the decade. The situation is clearly untenable, and we will continue with LGA partners to lobby government to ensure that adequate funds are available, both in this parliament and longer term. Despite this, adult services has continued to perform well. Although heavily monitored as a service, I think we've underreported this in the past, and I'm pleased that aspects of its performance will now be reported quarterly in the tackling inequalities and better neighbourhood sections of the council's dashboard report. Unfortunately, the timing of the portfolio report and the publishing of the local account, which is the adult social care annual report, didn't coincide this year, but I believe that Health Scrutiny Committee has been consulted on the draft local account at their meeting next week. The final version will be brought to City Council on the 6th of January, when we'll have an opportunity to discuss the findings of the report in detail. A recent development not covered in my report is a devolution proposal agreed by the North East Combined Authority. The proposals will give us the chance to establish a Commission for Health and Social Care Integration. This will ensure that the regional system is financially sustainable, has a clear plan identifying areas for investment, identifies savings that can be made through integrated service delivery, and how those savings can be reinvested to improve health outcomes for residents of our region. Also, since the report was written, the government has asked Newcastle City Council to be one of 15 trailblazer local authorities, who will receive the first cohort of refugees under the Syrian Vulnerable Persons Relocation Scheme. Having been in discussions with the government since January 2014 to bring 10 Syrian families to live in Newcastle, two or three families at a time, the government has now asked us to take 10 families before Christmas. YHEN have identified suitable accommodation, and we've also had discussions with education, health, and the community engagement team at Northumbria Police regarding the suitability of the properties to the family's needs. I understand that we're hoping to welcome the 10 families by the end of the month, which is fantastic news, and members for the wards that the families will be living in will be briefed about the preparations that have been made and the support that's been put in place for the families arriving. I've recently become the council's representative on the new North East Migration Network Members' Forum, catchy title, which provides a forum for sharing information, collaborative working, identifying emerging issues, and to coordinate and contribute to regional and national discussion on asylum and migration issues. It's through this forum that we will lobby the Home Office about their proposed closure of the North Shields Home Office Reporting Centre and the plan to move this function to Middlesbrough. I hope this gives council a flavour of the achievements and challenges of the past year, and an idea of the challenges ahead. I'm happy to take questions, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wendy Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Higgins?
I think, thank the portfolio member for the update after the scrutiny committee, I think that's been very helpful and very informative. And just a couple of queries, I was going to ask you about the Syrian families, you've obviously given an update. I just wondered whether there are any plans for any future families to come to Newcastle after these first 10, because you recall that we talked about, from our side, possibly up to 30 or even more families, and also how you're going to move on, and support for them in the communities where they're coming, because there are lots of people who would be willing to help out. The second question was, there's a section on work being done on keeping older people out of hospital, and I was wondering on the progress on that, in particular, whether we now have a community geriatrician, and what that job will achieve in helping, because obviously this is a key area for reducing costs for both the health service and social care, if we can keep people out of hospital who don't need to be there.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Schofield?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Kilgare for this comprehensive and informative report, and also to take a moment of recognition for the officers in adult care and health for all their doing, day by day, to ensure that people of Newcastle with complex needs are supported in this time of disproportionate and unfair austerity measures imposed by the government, doing such harm to people's lives. My question to councillor Kilgare is, the report talks about the winter-born concordat and transforming care for adults with learning disabilities. Is there any evidence that the collaborative approach you described is being effective? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Higgins?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and once again, I'd like to thank the cabinet member for the very helpful and comprehensive report. And one of the things I want to mention before I ask my question is, through my involvement with agencies elsewhere, how pleased I am about the level of awareness in relation to safeguarding adults, how it's been raised amongst those different agencies, with training and information, I think that's been a really positive step over recent months. But my question is a rather parochial one, relating to my own ward, and I do have to declare an interest as a patron of the SEARCH Project in Benwell, and the case study on page 143 of George mentions the work done by the SEARCH Project in relation to George and his care package. And I was just wondering if the cabinet member wants to comment on the excellent work done by SEARCH and other voluntary sector projects in providing adult care.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Huddard?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A couple of points to note...
A couple of points to note. I'm pleased councillor Kilgore in her, in the amendment mentioned about the deferment of the Dillnot proposals and that it was done as a request by the local government association and as 40% of the people who voted for that were Labour councillors and 45% were Conservatives. When I expressed my concerns about it, I was outvoted, but it was, the move to defer Dillnot was supported by Labour councillors at the LGA, which she may not be aware of. The other thing, in her report, she mentioned moves for de-institutionalisation for adults with a learning disability. Recently, the government has made some announcement about further funding to support community care for these people and I wanted to ask if she can tell us if we are to expect any of these earmarked funds into Newcastle. I'm also glad to hear that she's sitting on a regional board, did you say, about migration? And you may well be aware that there is something called an EASO, a European Asylum Support Office, which is a centre of excellence, research and casework, especially for local authorities. So it may well be one of those areas who can give some advice to your panel. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stockdale?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I welcome councillor Kilgore's comments about what we're doing as a city for refugees and I know we've discussed that at the last couple of meetings actually. Many of us, if not all of us on both sides of the chamber, I think, have been actively supporting refugees in crisis across the world. My comment relates specifically to page 123 in the report, the Gateway Refugee Resettlement Programme. And it's, the report says that we've expressed as a city our interest in participating in the re-tenanting of that programme. I'm aware that neighbouring authorities across the region have also expressed an interest, so it's just a plea really that we work collaboratively with our neighbours across the region to ensure that we take full advantage of this and that we are fully and actively participants in it. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Riley?
Question is, how many households became homeless after being asked to leave home office contracted accommodation for asylum seekers?
Thank you, councillor. Any more questions? Could I ask you to respond, councillor Kildare?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Excuse me, I hope I got all of those questions, I'm not sure I was writing fast enough. To answer councillor Taylor's query, yes, we are taking future Syrian families. We've also asked about individuals travelling alone and older people. We're yet to hear back from the government, the 10 families that we are taking, at the point that they asked us to take our 10 families, were the only 10 families that they'd agreed to bring over at that point and all Gates said we're bringing, or another of the trailblazer authorities and they were hoping that we'd be able to bring a number of people to Newcastle at the same time so that they could also help a number of Syrian refugees. As yet, we haven't got details of any more, but we certainly said we're happy to and I'll be happy to bring any future details to Health Scrutiny Committee. I'd have to get back to you on your other query because I don't have the answer to that with me. Councillor Schofield asked about the winterborne concordant. Since writing my report, a national report has been published at the end of October. It was published by the LGA and NHS England, Building the Right Support. Newcastle's the only local authority area in the North East and Cumbria to be named in the report for innovation in housing models and collaborative approaches with partners, including work with Northumbria University to develop bespoke training. So we're obviously extremely pleased that our work and work of our staff has been recognised. Councillor Higgins asked about search in his ward. I'm very pleased to agree that, yes, it's a marvellous piece of work, but not to make light of it, we do have a very active community and voluntary sector in Newcastle who do provide a great deal of services to our aging adult population and they are to be commended for that. Councillor Huddart? Earmarked funds for Newcastle. I'm not aware of the detail and I'll have to get back to you on that, but I will get back to you. And as for the detail, if you could email me the details of the organisation you're talking about, I'd be really interested to read up on it, so thank you for that. Councillor Stockdale asked if we were working with other local authorities and yes, I confirm that we are, we're working particularly closely with Gateshead, but also with our other neighbouring authorities. And councillor Riley asked about homeless households. Between April and June of this year, we had six households that were accepted as being homeless. The council's able to manage the households' transition to being a refugee through our emergency accommodation at Cherry Tree View, but it doesn't represent, sorry, it does represent a challenge to the council, as often we only get, we get less than two weeks' notice in which to secure a household, a new home. We're continuing to lobby for a more end-to-end approach to managing the asylum process and obviously the hope in doing that will be that it reduces the distress to the households concerned and the cost of responding to crisis caused by dislocation between national and local government processes. I hope that covers everything, but if I've missed anything, please let me know and I'll get the information circulated. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Does counsel accept the report? Thank you. Could I call upon Vida Morris to present the Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board Annual Report, 2014/2015?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and good evening, members. As Lord Mayor said, my name's Vida Morris and I'm chair of Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board and I'd like to talk to you this evening about Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board Annual Report for 2014 and 15. I have had the pleasure of being at the council chamber previously to talk to you about this very important subject. As the report has been shared, what I'd like to do is just present a brief synopsis of achievement for your kind consideration as requested this evening. I'd like to start by saying that although this year has brought with it a continued high degree of organisational change in partner agencies and with it associated financial austerity, the safeguarding adults agenda has, without exception, remained at the top of each partner agency's priorities. Safeguarding Adults Board's members have maintained their ongoing enthusiasm to improve and further develop safeguarding mechanisms across the whole system in order that citizens in Newcastle are safe. 2014/15 has been one of the most significant years in the history of safeguarding adults work. The CARE Act has placed safeguarding adults arrangements on a statutory basis for the first time from April 2015. As a result, much of the achievements in the last year have been focused on ensuring that the board and partner agencies were CARE Act compliant. And this has included revisions to policies and procedures, training and development, documentation, multi-agency, threshold guidance, the strengthening of safeguarding governance and accountability. And important work has also been undertaken to develop and implement an escalation policy in relation to lower-level harm whereby four lower-level concerns reported within a six-month period would trigger a face-to-face assessment of risk. This important work has ensured that staff in all agencies have safe, evidence-based frameworks to underpin their safeguarding practice. Other critical work has involved progressing effective inter-agency responses to the emerging national themes of self and institutional neglect, sexual exploitation and domestic abuse. And Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board does much of that work with the Safeguarding Children's Board and the Community Safety Partnership. In 2013, Guidance on Making Safeguarding Personal from the Association of Directors of Adult Social Services stated that unless people's lives are improved, then all safeguarding work, systems, procedures and partnerships are purposeless. There is a need to understand both what works and how safeguarding is making a difference to people. Therefore, the Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board has placed Making Safeguarding Personal at the heart of its work. There has been a continued improvement in ensuring that safeguarding adults processes are person-centred, in line with Making Safeguarding Personal guidance. And if I could just very briefly use an analogy to illustrate this. Previously, safeguarding adult processes were very mechanistic, something done to rather than with people involved, often with agencies utilising overprotective approaches which themselves could put adults at risk of further harm. If you could imagine for a moment safeguarding adults previously as a high-rise block of flats, all the same in aesthetics, shape and size, allocated sometimes without choice by number, no individualisation in design and tightly managed and controlled in terms of the environment. Safeguarding adults work has now moved to a more person-centred approach, taking into account people's views, wishes and feelings. Agencies now establish what being safe means to individuals with an emphasis on sensible risk appraisal and not risk avoidance. These approaches are able to reflect individual circumstances and differing lifestyles. So if I could ask you again to imagine just for a moment safeguarding adults approaches moving from the high-rise tower block of flats to the self-build bungalow informed by individual choice, personal preference and clarity of outcome in relation to both the design and ability to be different. Hopefully, the Safeguarding Adults Annual Report has evidenced for you how individuals are being involved and empowered and involvement and empowerment will continue to be the underpinning principles for safeguarding adults work going forward to keep Newcastle citizens safer from abuse and neglect. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, comments? Does councillor Taylor?
Thank you very much. Could I firstly welcome the change of emphasis to the more person-centred approach and the increase in multi-agency and regional working, I do think that's very important. I'd also welcome your comments about the importance of the CARE Act in putting safeguarding on a statutory basis. I just have a few questions. On page 165, you mentioned a report, a research project into novel psychoactive substances and a report that was due this summer and I just wondered if that had been published. Secondly, there has been a lot of publicity recently about the risk of vulnerable young adults being radicalised through the internet. I wondered if we had any problems like that in Newcastle and whether you felt the PREVENT approach was the best way to deal with that. And you also mentioned the THINK FAMILY approach and I wondered what the early indications were about how that was working, whether you think it's going to be the best way forward in future.
Councillor Stockdale?
It's just a question on page 151 of the report, the deprivation of liberty safeguards and the report mentions the tremendous burden that that's placed on the local authority board from a budgetary point of view, but also I think from a workload of our colleagues working in social services. Paragraph 4.5.3 mentions the consultation that's currently open and it's a question really just, are we fully and actively participants in that consultation, are we feeding in to that process so we can try and sort of shape the outcome that we need from it?
Do you have any more contributions? Councillor Schofield, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really welcome this report, it's full of stuff that one wants to unpack and talk about, so thank you. I just wanted to talk about paragraph 4.3. And really, I just would be interested, I'm very involved with a regional group on this and I would just be very interested to, if you could just tell us a bit about the new multi-agency team and how that's going to work. Obviously, it'll go across sectors, so I'd just like to hear a bit more about that. Thank you.
Do you have any more contributors? Could I ask Mr Morris to respond, please?
Yes, thank you very much. I think it would be true to say that novel psychoactive substances or legal highs does pose a real challenge for all agencies and working with all age groups across the spectrum. I'm not aware whether that report has in fact been published and that's something I would find out for you, but I think that there is an ongoing need for us to put pressure for some changes nationally to influence how we can manage the impact of those substances on communities and that would be ongoing work and the board is having regular updates on work ongoing in that area. The risk of vulnerable adults being radicalised in the PREVENT agenda, I think that's not just about young adults, I think it's about any adult that might be vulnerable and susceptible to being led in any particular direction. I think the PREVENT agenda is the right agenda to take it forward. I'm not sure that the training has been delivered in the right way and targeted at the right individuals. And I think with the radicalisation agenda and PREVENT, it's about raising awareness of where frontline practitioners who would be working with these individuals might get specialist advice and support. We don't want all frontline staff to be experts in radicalisation, what we do want them to do is recognise signs or indications that something might be amiss and then seek specialist advice and support to determine the best way forward. So we're trying to get early intervention and you remember a case that was in the press where the bin men had noticed trees dying near a drain and that was because of the substances used to make the explosives being poured down a drain and it was because of their vigilance and good observation skills that that was able to be identified. So it's not just frontline staff in health and social care, in police and probation, but you have wider staff who work out there in communities who might be the ones who notice something that would be worthy of report, but it's for them to know who to report that to is the critical factor. The THINK FAMILY approach is exactly the right approach and the right way forward and the more we can work jointly across the life course, the more effective our safeguarding systems will be. But just to give an example, one of the most challenging environments you can have is where you have alcohol and substance misuse, mental health problems and domestic violence and that impacts on the whole family, whether it's children and young people from babies upwards to the adults in the household, to possibly older adults that they have living with them or they have carer responsibilities. So the more we can work within a family and take cognisance of the impact on other family members of any particular individual's problems or issues, the more effective our systems will be and it is absolutely the right way forward. In terms of the consultation, I'd like to very much say that it's the latter rather than the former and you should be influencing, informing what the outcomes would be and not being kind of consulted with as an afterthought. Don't know if that answers your question or you want to... You are, yes, very actively. And the multi-agency team, I think, again, if I can refer back to the question about THINK FAMILY, you know, we don't want a multi-agency team on the right working with children and young people and a multi-agency team on the left working with adults. What we need to do is have a multi-agency safeguarding hub with professionals and multidisciplinary from multiple agencies who can work again with a range of issues around vulnerability and risk. And I think... And I think that, you know, we've already seen the benefit in the way that other areas have had those multi-agency teams working with children and young people on the early intervention and prevention agenda. But the more people are co-located and the more people work together, you can much more readily find responsive solutions to problems and emerging issues. And again, I don't know if that addresses your question, or you would like to raise another comment?
Thanks for your report. Does council agree to accept this report?
Agree.
Thank you. Thanks, Mrs Morris. Right, do we have someone to present the next report on committee? As I notice, councillor Dunn is not here. Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you.
Do we have a second, dear?
I'm sure one of my colleagues will second this.
Councillor Cook.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, I'll present this formally. I think colleagues across the council chamber might be interested in the information on page 198 about investments and what we are doing with investments in the city council. And we are being very prudent in what we are doing and not borrowing money. If we've got resources, cash available to spend, we're using that rather than borrowing because obviously that's cheaper and we don't get very much interest on any money in our investments. Lord Mayor, this is a formal report that has to come to city council. I think we bring a half-yearly report and bring an annual update as well, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you very much.
Councillor Cook, do you second?
Just for my secondary report.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor. Councillor Faulkner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm sure this is one of the reports that members really look forward to, to really get their teeth into. For my sins, I chair the Finance and Budget Steering Group on scrutiny, and it has the job of having a look at this and trying to find intelligent and challenging questions to ask of officers. I don't know we always succeed in doing that, so if we were to try and assess whether the Schedule A, Appendix A investment criteria do actually meet the investment strategy aims, I'd really struggle a little bit to persuade you, as I suspect perhaps councillor McCarthy might as well. I'd just say one thing, though, that we note, of course, that the borrowing will increase, but it will still be within the authorised limits. I think that, and that's the odd thing about this report, because it talks about investment strategy, and when I think of investment strategy, I think of what's the council investing its money in, what things is it doing, what's it building, whereas actually, it's the other way around, it's what's the council investing its own funds in. But nonetheless, I do think that we should perhaps, as an authority, take more of a direct interest in the investment strategies as a whole, and it is something that scrutiny wants to have a look at. So just final thoughts is that the kind of things that we will have in our mind as we look at these kinds of reports in the future are things like the 45 million that the council is going to borrow for refurbishment of the civic centre. What's the profile of that borrowing? And will we all be around long enough to establish whether the predicted savings actually materialise or not? Let's hope they do. But also, and perhaps a bit less, well, I don't know, should say less controversially, just looking at the balance between the capital financing of the housing revenue account and of the general fund, given the, shall we just say, changes in relationship that have been happening between those two accounts and the council and your homes in Newcastle over recent times. Thank you.
Councillor Hillix?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Forgot how to do it. My question's quite simple, it's on page 198, 4.7, it says the current rate of, the current average rate of external interest payable, and then 4.9 says the current average rate of external interest receivable. I'd just like to know what the two current average interest rates are, please.
Any more members? Could I ask councillor McCarthy to respond, please?
I don't think I even understand that question, Lord Mayor. Thank you. Thank you to councillor Faulkner for his comments, he's absolutely right, it is a bit of financial gobbledygook. We do have to go through this process, though, Lord Mayor, and I know that the budget, whatever it's called, the task and ongoing meeting that looks at finances across the authority, I'm sure councillor Faulkner can ask his questions of the officers at that. As I understand it, the borrowing of the 45 million, and I'm afraid councillor Bell isn't here, he'd know much more about this than I do, the borrowing about the civic centre, I think, is over 30 years, and our estimates are that we will get 77 million, I think it is, in that time, or is it 67 million? It's an additional 32 million income over that period of time, taking into account paying off the debt, and I'm assuming that takes into account all of the interest that we would have to repay on that. I don't think the question councillor Faulkner asked about the council and my churn was a question, Lord Mayor, so I hope, if I've missed the point, then please let me know later. And in relation to councillor Hillix's questions, I'll have to come back to you because I don't actually understand the question. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, may I repeat my question? I just want to know two interest rates. What do we get and what do we pay?
I think we would need to get back to you from another source, councillor Hillix. Thank you. Does council agree the recommendations?
Agree.
Thank you. Questions by members, they're... These are being permitted under standing order 2B7 as being emergency questions, and I would ask councillor McCarthy to respond.
Lord Mayor, can I check which ones I'm doing first? Am I doing the oral ones, or am I doing the urgent oral questions?
Urgent oral questions first.
Thank you.
Devolution first.
I hope, Lord Mayor, that in my statement earlier on tonight's agenda, I've responded to the question that councillor Faulkner has placed before council tonight. I've already made it clear that we will be consulting, and that consultation starts in November with the wider community. The issue about the concerns expressed by the business community is quite difficult because as part of the negotiations around devolution, we weren't able, as council colleagues across the council chamber know, we weren't able to discuss very much of the detail about that, we were sworn to secrecy. So it was quite difficult to engage the business community more broadly than that. But of course, many, many people in the business community have been involved in those discussions to date, and I would challenge those concerns. There are individuals in the business community who have made their views very clear through the media, but we would regard that we have, as a state council and as a combined authority, have done some consultation with some aspects of the business community. Clearly, that will be part of the next phase of the devolution work, and further consultation with the various communities will be part of that process. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Havers, supplementary?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the earlier statement and the answer now. Am I not right in thinking, though, and I did read it in the journal, so it must be correct, that the leader of the council did, perhaps slightly belatedly, after the deal was published, say that he was really in favour of a referendum on elected mayors, which we hadn't heard before? But assuming that that statement is correct, does that not mean that he would have been prepared to fund a referendum in the city? Because I guess we'd have to pay for it ourselves. So is there any real difference between that and the kind of ballot that Durham are proposing? And the key point about it is about getting public endorsement and backing for what is really a very significant change in how we govern ourselves.
Further to that question...
Could I ask councillor McCarthy to reply first?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think we need to see what the leader of council was seeing in a context, and that was part of a much broader debate. When you get to see and when you hear much more about the current agreement and what we will be consulting on, the elected mayor for the North East Combined Authority will be a member of the cabinet, will be held, and the cabinet will be the leaders of the local authorities, the seven local authorities. And so they won't be a kind of all-powerful, like the London mayor, it will be a different model, it will be much more collaborative, cooperative than the London model, and the elected mayor in the region would be given the devolved work, if you like, from government and would take nothing from local authorities, so they would have very, very specific responsibilities. Do we need public endorsement and backing? I think that's quite difficult to do because actually it's quite complex, there are complex issues. We will do our best to inform council colleagues and members of the public in the best way that we possibly can to make sure that people are engaged in this whole process. I don't think we could afford to carry out a full referendum, and I don't know that that could give us a particular endorsement, but obviously, we will have to wait and see the outcomes of the consultation. We've not even had that discussion internally, let alone anywhere else, so obviously, what I'm reporting is what the leaders' board are discussing at the moment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Further supplementary from councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, please, councillor McCarthy, by way of clarification, you mentioned in one of your early answers in respect to this that the cost of referendum would be £400,000. Presumably, that's the cost of a freestanding referendum, rather than one, say, which was at the same time as the 2016 elections. And the other clarification that I would seek was if one authority, namely Durham, has a referendum and rejects the proposals, and yet the other members of the North East Combined Authority, through their non-direct democratic processes, decide that they're going to accept them, what happens then? Is it for this deal to go forward, does it have to be unanimous? Can one authority, through one referendum, pull down all the proposals?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and in answer to councillor Ashby's question, I think we have counted that as a standalone cost, but that would be a cost because actually we don't know that we could do that at the same time as the local elections in May. As I said earlier, Durham are not having a referendum, that's not their plan, and they're not having an election right across the authority, they're holding some kind of postal consultation, as I understand it. The legislation, of course, we're kind of working in the dark, Lord Mayor, because the legislation isn't through Parliament yet, so the current legislation allows for one local authority not to be part of the combined authority subsequently. So, I mean, we have to wait and see what the, as the bill goes through Parliament, to see what happens, but one local authority could vote to not be part of it in the future. It wouldn't have to be unanimous.
Any more supplementaries? Could I ask councillor McCarthy respond to the question in the name of councillor Taylor on QCS?
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I've got about 27 sheets of paper in front of me. This week has been extremely disappointing in relation to the Quality Contracts Board outcomes. The proposals that were put forward were in the best interests of the travelling public, and the three unelected officials have decided that the chance of lowering fares and integrating travel and transport across Tainan Wia isn't as important as preserving the profits of the bus firms, even though those officials admit in their reports, as colleagues will have seen, that our plans would improve services. Of course, that is of huge concern to us all because we have invested quite a lot of time, we've invested a significant amount of resource into this work, but the board ruled that voters can't have a say on bus routes, or on timetables, or on fares, or on integration, because the act that would have given us that ability doesn't compensate some of the UK's richest companies running these buses, who might lose some of those routes. That compensation potentially could cost the public anything up to £226 million. Clearly, the impact of that decision will be felt far and wide across the country because we know that in a number of the devolution deals that are currently being negotiated in Sheffield, in Manchester and elsewhere. Having the opportunity to go for the bus regulation locally, so what's being termed as the bus bill, the government will set out and address over the next, well, it's already had one reading in Parliament, that will address a threat to devolution, and clearly, we need to learn from the discussions that have taken place, from the report that we've received, and take a view, I guess, in the next few weeks about what we do next. Lord Mayor, the report will come to the combined authority. It isn't up to the city to make a decision on the work or what we do next, it will go to the North East Transport Committee and to the leaders' board, but as you can see from the figures I've just quoted, and councillor Taylor will be aware of that, it's unaffordable, if you like, in terms of the compensation that this board expects us to pay. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor McCarthy, can I, a supplementary, has the deputy leader agreed that had the voluntary partnership agreement option been chosen, we should already have an improved bus system?
Two more supplementaries, councillor Wood? Sorry, councillor McCarthy, do you want to respond?
Lord Mayor, I don't agree with that, we looked at that in some detail, even in the final agreement, and those, the discussions about voluntary partnership with the bus companies went on right until the 11th hour and the 59th minute, they never offered sufficient support for the proposal, so it was never going to be achievable through that offer.
Councillor Wood?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As someone who's been involved in the quality contract debate since the very inception, I thought this week's announcement was disappointing, to say the least. In the past, my hands, well, my voice has been tied politically because I wasn't allowed to say anything either for or against. What I would like to ask the deputy leader of council, first of all, is that would she agree with me that this decision by an unelected body is to the detriment of the travelling public in Tainan Wia, and will she also confirm that the decision that this unelected body has made is not binding? The new combined authority can disregard this decision and go forward with what was, in my view, a system that would benefit the local people of Tainan Wia and Durham and Northumberland, and also just to remind members that when they get asked the question, why are the buses running off in my area, then the answer is, is point them at the Quality Contract Board.
Councillor McCarthy, do you want to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'd absolutely agree with that. It does point out that the legislation that set up the opportunity for us to go for quality contracts was flawed. Thank you.
Councillor Pears had his hand up, but unfortunately, he was beaten to the punch by councillor Schofield. Councillor Schofield?
She was actually disappointed, but...
Was she? Oh, councillor Pears?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am reminded when the bus firms were accused of behaving like gangsters towards, against the quality contract scheme, and with the announcement of the board's decision, it certainly feels like the travelling public in our region and no doubt across the rest of the country have been held to ransom in the interests of private properties over the travelling public. Lord Mayor, just in terms of my question to the deputy leader, with the Quality Contract Scheme's board decision, in particular, the need to compensate private bus companies for their potential lost profits, should it have gone ahead despite the benefits it would have brought to the public, have other councils that are involved in devolution deals across the country, which... deals across the country, which bus regulation forms quite a major part of that, been made aware of what's happened here in our region?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And sorry, I failed to answer councillor Wood's question about not binding on the combined authority, Lord Mayor, so if I can just pick that up first. That is absolutely right, that the judgment is not binding on the combined authority, it could be disregarded, but clearly we need to look at that with proper advice and guidance around what we do, and maybe that helps to answer councillor Powers' question. Other councils have been in touch with us, senior officers of the authority have been in touch with the Department for Transport to discuss the outcome of the board's decision. Obviously, we will work with others and we will try and ensure that the bus bill, when it becomes legislation, will help us to have integrated, cheap, proper transport that meets the needs of the whole of the combined authority area as far as possible, given the funding that we have, and we will share all of the learning from the process that we've been through with others. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Could I call upon councillor McCarthy to reply to the question from councillor Stone relating to street trading licences?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Stone asked about street trading licences, so the powers that the council has to regulate street trading only cover the sale of articles and not services, so currently there are 34 street trading sites licensed in the city, none of those are used for trading financial services. Indeed, financial services regulation is the responsibility of the Financial Conduct Authority, as I understand it councillor Stone's been asked to forward details to officers so that we can refer any specific concerns that he has to the Financial Conduct Authority. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor, supplementary?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you for the, councillor member, for an interesting answer which does not reflect my understanding of the situation. The reason behind my question is that credit card salespeople have stationed themselves on Shillingham Road in My Ward on several recent occasions, stopping passers-by and advising them to sign up for credit cards aimed at people with a poor credit history and if may say so to high-ish annual percentage rate. I have raised this with trading standards officers but have advised they have a council permit to operate. Does the councillor member share my reservations about this and will she take to review the policy forthwith?
Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I am very concerned about that, and I understand we also have credit card companies who are stopping people in Northumberland Street. One of the aspects of the devolution deal that we have asked for is special licensing opportunities in the future, so that if there's something like this that crops up that we can't deal with through our normal processes, that we might through devolution ask if we could take on responsibility from that, from other national organisations that are set up to do that. So I share your views, you know, and council members will know that we are doing as much as we can to, you know, support, to make sure that welfare rights service gets support to the right families, we've taken this view about debt across the city, we are promoting affordable credit, we're supporting independence, we're using our resources in the very best way possible, so anything that we can do that helps us to legislate against such corrupt companies, I think, would be, I would guess would receive cross-party support. Thank you.
Two more supplementaries, no one taking. We have also received three questions, more for written reply, these together with the responses have been circulated and displayed in the foyer. Appointments, there are no appointments, sorry, or the appointments agreed are set out? Come to notice of motion, could I call upon councillor Faulkner to be seconded by councillor Loe?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. After the fiasco locally of the run-up to the 1966 World Cup, which denied us the chance to be a host city and which sadly some of us are probably old enough to remember, many despaired that we'd ever get the chance to host a major sporting event in Newcastle, but happily we did and we had the success of Euro 96 football and the first-ever major tournament Fan Zone, which was a very democratic step, then 2012 Olympic Games football and now the Rugby World Cup, and it would really be remiss of us not to take the opportunity of a full city council meeting to pay tribute to and to record our appreciation of those whose planning and project management ability made the whole event such a triumph, especially the aforementioned Stephen Savage, to whom all things seem possible and achievable, and the operational lead Mark Jackson. And you know, for them it was a much bigger job than the Olympic Games because the officers had much more direct responsibility for infrastructure and for delivery, and there were many more supporters and visitors to look after than in 2012. Often the success of these events is talked up in terms of the amount of money that it brings into the local economy, and I understand that and it's important, but the real reason we bid for them is because we're a city with a great passion for sport, because we want to showcase and share with visitors our great city, because we have the facilities and we've got a great track record of putting on a show, it creates that buzz and the energy about the place which is great for people who live here and visitors alike, and of course it helps our reputation as a city and a city region of international importance, and we did undoubtedly put on a great show, as we did before with the other rugby code, the Magic Weekend, and it's good to know that it's coming back. The only complaint I received and why I tagged it on to the motion, and it was a comment online as well, which I read several times, is the lack of a tourist information centre in this city, and I just hope we can take a fresh look at this sometime, don't have a closed mind, because frankly the information points that we've got at the moment are really not fit for purpose. Now, of course, we could have been planning, right now, to host a Football World Cup after all, if the country's bid for 2018 or 22 had been successful, we were part of it, of course. We now know that Russia was chosen to host in 2018, before the actual vote was taken, according to Mr Blatter and the outrageously corrupt organisation that he heads up, so I'd urge the council to follow the example of Sheffield and to campaign for the repayment of the £200,000 that the council spent on this sham of a bidding campaign. The timing of my motion to cancel in 2012 about the year of exercise and sport was just after the Olympic Games, when everybody was talking legacy, and which sadly, you know, you have to be honest and say nationally and maybe even locally, it hasn't really been delivered. The majority party amended the motion then, said, yes, there should be another year of exercise and sport, but not in 2013, they moved it out to 2014, perhaps understandably, but it never happened, and a bit like a rather embarrassing relative, it was never spoken of again. The first year of exercise and sport really did raise sport participation in the city, we have all the data, and I appreciate, you know, in this day and age it won't be possible to do it again on the same scale, but maybe something in summer, maybe built around the Longest Day on the 21st of June, which we did last time when all of our sports facilities were thrown open, all the venues, and it produced a great surge in new users of them, and perhaps any underspend on the public health money could be deployed, it wouldn't cost too much and it's an investment, not just a cost. So the motion argues there should be a stronger place for exercise and sport in the Wellbeing for Life strategy, and as was pointed out when we debated the planned closure of Elsik Pool at the September meeting, the council has been shutting or transferring facilities, but we still have a pretty solid sporting infrastructure with strong voluntary groups in the universities, the college and the private sports club, and maybe there's more we can do if we all work more closely together, including the leisure trusts who've got the most viable of our sporting assets, but I hope we can still engage them in a positive manner. So, please support the motion, give it a go.
Councillor Loe, to second? Thank you. We have an amendment put forward by councillor Stockdale, seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. The amendment to councillor Faulkner's motion is intended to be a relatively friendly one, I think I support the sentiment and of course the specific thanks and congratulations that councillor Faulkner has put forward to officer Stephen Savage and his team and everybody who was involved, both from an officer point of view and a volunteer point of view. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get any of the games, tickets were sparse, couldn't get any of them, but I did make it into the Fan Zone just, and it was absolutely fantastic, and I think everybody agrees that the buzz over that weekend was wonderful. So absolutely, I agree that we've got to capitalise on that, we've got to use that to kind of take the city forward from a sporting point of view. The amendment does remove councillor Faulkner's request that we look again at the City tourist information office, I think that has already been through a process of consultation, it's already been through a budget process and decided upon. However, what I will say is we are at the moment doing some work within our library network to see whether there's more we can do within our library network around tourist information, picking up on the specific point of councillor Faulkner's there. And I think the amendment also picks up specifically some of the comments about what we do as a city actually around exercise and sport and some of the fantastic initiatives like the Parklife Programme, which has been running now, I think, for about a year and a half, two years, and that's achieved some absolutely remarkable results, and of course our active Newcastle programme, which has run successfully for many years. So I'd ask for support for the amendment.
Councillor McCarthy?
Reserve the right to speak, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brakley? Councillor Leggitt, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I've got a bit of a sense of déjà vu about this motion because I would remind colleagues at our last meeting, there was a very similar motion which was passed unanimously, and I hope the same can happen this evening, and the last meeting we had a motion about culture and heritage, and I think the essence of that motion was that this helped the city and the region to generate opportunities for development in cultural activities and we should do more about that because this can benefit both the economy and the wellbeing of the citizens. Now, this motion is very similar, of course, but it refers to sport. Now, I think there's a very serious macroeconomic argument here behind both motions, all over the world cities like Newcastle with a tradition of labour-intensive, heavy industry are desperately trying to come to terms with all the drastic changes and economic structures that have happened, and I think we haven't done too badly in many respects in adapting to some of these changes in Newcastle, in that tourism, culture and sport have replaced some of our more traditional industries as major sources of employment and prosperity, particularly now that we do have a wide range of hotels, restaurants, shops, transport to support all of this. Newcastle, I think, is in a great position now to develop its service industries even further, and this has been clearly indicated by the success in our participation in the events that have been mentioned in the motion, particularly the Rugby World Cup. But of course, there's another side to this, people in Newcastle, like myself, simply enjoyed the work of experience, and perhaps just as important, it has been mentioned that we do need to have regular referrals to what is going on in sport to encourage participation, because that is all need, something which is good for the health and wellbeing of the population. It has been mentioned that there have been disappointments here, I believe that after the London Olympics there was a huge surge in interest in participation in sport, I read in the paper the other day that something like 400,000 participants have fallen off in participating in their sport since the Olympics, which is rather difficult, and I think it does mean that we do need this regular injection of all kinds of events to keep people encouraged in participation in sport. If I could make just perhaps one personal comment about the Rugby World Cup, as many colleagues know, I'm not really a rugby fan, I'm a round ball person, but I was certainly enthralled by what I saw of the Rugby World Cup. If somebody had said to me that I would have said this about a Scotland versus Samoa rugby match, which I was involved in, I wouldn't have really believed it, I think there was more chance of me becoming involved in This Girl Can, which I think is also mentioned in the motion. However, it was an enthralling experience, a great deal of interest, there was a great deal of atmosphere both in the city and at the match, it was a wonderful experience, and if I could just very quickly perhaps point to three things which I found particularly appealing, and I think by having this kind of sporting event does educate people like me that perhaps things can happen in a very positive manner. First of all, there was a superb mingling of fans from all over the world, not a little bit of trouble anywhere, at the match itself there was a wonderful spirit, there seemed to be a complete lack of diving and overreacting to fouls, and there was a great deal of respect for the referee. The red light has come on, but could I just perhaps make the plea that the regular occupants of St James's Park take real notice of these three things, of which I was very impressed. I don't have a great deal of faith in this, but there again, I'm an optimistic person. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ashby. Councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Magic Weekend and the Rugby World Cup show that football is not the only national and international level sport in Newcastle, but how much better they showed us off and showed us a good example of the best in sport. Newcastle Eagles Basketball Club delivered a clean sweep of all domestic trophies for the third time in 2014-15. Newcastle Racecourse, when redeveloped, will take floodlit horse racing onto TVs around the world. We hardly need mention the Great North Run, the greatest mass participation event in the country. All these sports and others I haven't mentioned put Newcastle on the map, attract people and value to the city and are enjoyed by many. How sad it is therefore that football, whose stadium dominates the skyline, makes the news not because of its success, but because after last Derby game there were only 10 arrests. How sad that while rugby fans were able to take a drink off the terraces at St James's Park at the Rugby World Cup, football ones can't be trusted to drink responsibly. How sad that when I stood watching an organised youth football game a couple of Saturdays back, I had to leave because of the bad language, not just on the pitch, but the coaching staff effing and blinding at the players. It's clear that sport and leisure can pay us back on multiple levels, the health and happiness of our people and the economic wellbeing and reputation of a city, to name but four, so I'm pleased to support councillor Faulkner's motion.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McCarthy, reserve the right. Sorry, councillor Higgins is wanting to talk about Magic Weekend here.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I do have a rather interesting slant on this, shall we say, but I'm speaking in support of the amendment from a slightly different angle on this. Lord Mayor, I'd like to express my appreciation also of the efforts of everyone associated with the Rugby Union World Cup. However, without wishing to appear a little churlish, I would like to know why this accolade has been given such prominence on the council agenda whilst my own similar motion regarding the Rugby League Magic Weekend was recently consigned to the midnight hour. The reason I ask this question is that the sport of rugby league has lived for too long in the shadows of the establishment counterparts game of rugby union. For the less informed, it is the working class version of that sport and you're unlikely to find an Alastair or a Tristan in the ranks of rugby league players. It draws its support from the working class heartlands of Leeds, Wigan, Widnes, St Helens and other similar northern towns and cities, and as such has more in common with the culture in the North East than it's, I did say it's somewhat middle-class rugby union counterpart, but maybe I should delete the word somewhat middle-class. As colleagues are possibly aware, I am now seeking to promote this game in the Newcastle area through the Friends of Rugby League and through my very close links with both the chairman of Newcastle Thunder, Bill Midgley, and also Cramlington Rockets, the principal junior rugby league club in the area who get so many young people involved in this wonderful sport. Both will benefit from the fact that once again we have attracted the Magic Weekend to the city in May 2016 with its wonderful sporting spectacle and colourful excitement. I therefore applaud the success of the Rugby Union World Cup, but also will express my hope that both the council and the media will welcome the return of the Magic Weekend to our city with the same level of verve, publicity and enthusiasm.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McCarthy? Councillor McCarthy, your response, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I will be brief. Thank you very much. I agree with councillor Higgins, actually, I think it's been really fantastic, the atmosphere, the celebration, the festival across the city, it wouldn't have happened without the hard work of officers here, and actually the contribution which I think we recognise in the amendment, the contribution of the dozens of volunteers who worked as guides and advisers, helped people to find their way around the city and were very well-trained, I think, in that role. But I think one of the important aspects of having the Rugby World Cup in the city is about the contribution that made to grassroots rugby, encouraging young people being involved in that, I mean, I understand that the All Blacks went down to meet a group of schoolchildren... I mean, I understand that the All Blacks went down to meet a group of schoolchildren in the Discovery Museum, you know, I think it's those kinds of experiences, those children will never forget that, it's those kinds of things. So it isn't necessarily just the games and the games coming to the city, it's everything else that comes with that. And I think it's really interesting that councillor Faulkner related to the follow-up from the Olympic Games and the surge of interest, which is indeed true, but I think it was the coalition government that withdrew the funding for that, following on from that. So, and it's interesting that we've got this motion coming before us tonight, when actually it's quite difficult to be able to fund things, and as you can see in our amendment, we're taking some credit on behalf of the officers of the council for the work that has gone on in bringing in £500,000 currently that we've now been given by Sport England. We've only got that because of the hard work of officers in the authority doing work on, you know, promoting things like This Girl Can and Parklives. And actually, what we want to do is, sadly, it's one 30-minute exercise activity, you know, it's one 30-minute activity session that we count, which seems fairly minimal, Lord Mayor, but that is what we will get measured on, and that will be part of what Active Newcastle uses that resource for. And I do think it isn't just about physical health, it is also about emotional health and wellbeing too. And if I can just address the issue of the tourist information centre that councillor Stockdale mentioned too, everything that we are doing is moving towards being much more digital, and actually, if I'm going to somewhere else, I don't wait until I get there and go and find a tourist information centre, I try and find out before I leave home what there is available. And, you know, most of the people who will come into the city would have been doing exactly the same thing. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. councillor Law, you reserve the right?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yep, can I just say, Lord Mayor, I welcome everything that everyone's said. I'm like councillor Higgins, not the same sport, but I also have been a long-time rugby supporter since I've stood on the sidelines and watched my son try to play and sometimes play quite well. And he's somebody who actually had to travel to the southern hemisphere to a place called Dunedin to watch the All Blacks play. I've watched them play at St James's, which is quite good. They were probably the best team in black and white I've seen there for a while, I have to say as well. However, it's also, while we talk about the effect of the World Cup, I think we need to mention, after all the accolades to everyone who contributed here, is also to the two rugby teams we have in the city, which is the Falcons and the Newcastle Thunder now, I think. Both won Rugby League, Rugby Union, both based at the Falcons ground in Woolington Ward, but great supporters to the community, doing lots of interactivities into schools and things, lots of children's activities there, and I really think that that's something that we should be hosting and making more of across the city, their work with schools. However, I do think that the Rugby World Cup did showcase the city and the region, but most of all, I think the people, I think the reaction that people had to coming to Newcastle was fantastic. I'd like to say something about Lord Mayor, who turned up and tried each match as a working event, not a freebie or a day out, who made lots of friends. I also may have got lots of invites to places in the southern hemisphere for that, which was quite nice, I don't know if he's going to take them up on them. But it does prove that we can host world-class events in partnership with others, not just across the city, across the region as well. You mentioned the All Blacks going to the museum, but they actually covered the whole region, they covered the whole of the north-east, and the whole demeanour, even down to the fact that, you know, Sonny Bill Williams actually gave his medal away on the day, it's absolutely incredible. But the contribution is not just about sport, it's about what it brings towards involving investment with jobs, visitor numbers, and we can't underestimate that. And councillor Faulkner's right, we should be welcoming back Magic Weekend, and it further demonstrates what can achieve when we all work together. It's a great opportunity for us. And also, can I say that there were lots of people who made it happen, but don't forget people like the police and the fire ambulance services and all of those people, even our staff who are outside the ground on the day, making sure that people weren't getting ripped off by dodgy traders or ticket chouts or whoever. It's all made us more of a community and made us a centre-stage internationally, and it was quite interesting to read in some of the international press that places like Gloucester and what have you have benefited from having these games, but the line, the throwaway line laws, but we always expected Newcastle to do well, and I think that's something we really need to work with. And practically, I mean, the final thing, of course, was the people, the fans, I mean, we've mentioned the fact there were no arrests, I mean, for Scotland, it was practically a home game, and those of us who are older can remember when Rangers came down to play in the Fairs Cup and the city practically was battered down for the day, yet, you know, we had Scotland supporters roaming the streets in the fan zone, absolutely no problem, we're here for every game in force. But also, we've got to remember that we hosted two, the world champions and two southern hemisphere teams, and they both brought, all brought supporters here who've all gone back with the same message about Newcastle, and I think everybody in the city and the region should be proud about that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. councillor Faulkner, write the reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Quick wind-up. councillor Higgins comments, well, I've heard of Magic Johnson, I think we'll have to call him Magic Higgins now, as he works it into every meeting, and that's great, and I agree with everything you've said, except the bit where you seem to be wanting to fight a class war over the rugby code, but I'm not sure that was terribly appropriate, but there we are. councillor McCarthy, thank you for the comments, I mean, the original motion does, of course, mention the volunteers and the role that they played, and yes, we're very happy on the middle bit of the amendment that adds some of these good initiatives that have come in over recent times, and we're very happy to welcome those. As far as, if I just pick up a comment very quickly about the visitor information centre, of course she's right in principle, but I think the point really is that the old centre, remember there were two at one time, not that long ago, was closed before really the alternatives had been properly developed and thought through, and I think that was a shame, and I think it is time to have a look at it again. If I come now to the amendment as a whole, my friend councillor Stockdale, who described it as a generally friendly amendment, and I suppose he's generally right about that, except that it seems to finally bury the concept of a Year of Exercise and Sport, so thanks for at least resolving it, and takes out the bit about the tourist information there, but apart from that, it's a friendly amendment. So I'm going to ask my colleagues here if they would support the original motion, vote against the amendment, but when it comes as an amended motion, it's up to them how they vote.
Thank you, members, could I ask you to vote on the amendment, please? We now need to vote on the substantive motion. Do we need to vote on the substantive motion, councillor Faulkner? No? Agreed? Thank you. Substantive motion is carried. Amended motion is carried. We now pass on to item number... As it is now 8.30, the guillotine has fallen. I will now deal with the remaining business on the agenda as follows. I will call each item on the agenda in turn, inviting the member whose name this item stands to indicate whether he or she wishes the matter to be a) dealt with and put to the vote without discussion, or b) postponed to the next ordinary meeting of the council to be dealt with as priority business. So I ask councillor Faulkner if he would advise us how he wishes his motion to be dealt with.
Lord Mayor, neither of the above, if you don't mind, because I think I did write to you earlier in the day saying that I intended to withdraw the motion anyway, as I've received an assurance from councillor Bartlett after discussion with the deputy leader that it will come to constitutional committee. So the motion's withdrawn if you and councillor agree.
councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I would like to take it to the vote tonight, and I will move it, and I'm happy to accept councillor Taylor's amendment as a friendly amendment with a slight tweak about the organisation that she mentions that we're not aware of yet, but if she's happy to accept that, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Can we agree on this? councillor Stockdale?
Lord Mayor, I have to declare a prejudicial interest.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'd like it to go to the vote this evening.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm happy for it to be decided upon this evening.
Very good. Still go through the vote? Do you have a second there?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Is it agreed? We haven't got an amendment.
Do we go to the vote? Could I ask you, councillor, to go to the vote? That concludes the business for tonight's city council. I'm now formally closing the meeting. Could I ask you to stay in your places until the mayor and sheriff have left the committee? Could I ask if you've signed your pledges and put them on the table outside on the way out? Thank you.